All right, it is 7 o'clock PM. What's today's date? The 14th. 14, I'm sorry. All right.
Here's mine.
Oh, here it is. Okay, let's open up the City College Place City Council meeting for January the 14th, 2020. Do we all could please rise for the part of the members?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Myhena would like to say a few words.
Would you bow your heads, please? Dear heavenly Father, we're so thankful we can come to do the business of the city. We ask your directions in making the decisions that is according to your will. We thank you for our fine staff, Lord. We thank you so much for them. We ask that you continue to work with them each week. In Jesus' name I ask. Amen.
First item for opening, we would like to discuss or actually take care of the mayor pro temp appointment that was discussed at the City Council workshop last week.
I was supposed to have voted in first.
No, not yet. It's not an item on the, still the opening item, because we wanted to get this taken care of first. Yeah, so we would like to, has everybody, does anybody have any questions before we discussed last week at the workshop regarding mayor pro temp?
Would you like for me to explain my situation?
No, okay, I'd be happy to do it.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I would like to make the motion.
Okay, motion was made, do we have a second?
Sorry.
We have a second. Mr. Bobby, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Councilmember Peterson will be the mayor pro temp until councilmember Myhena is able to return and resign for the other reasons. Thank you very much to both of you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, now we are opening up for public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to come speak and share some of your thoughts with us, please do so. Up at the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
All right. Hi there. My name's Alex Sanchez-Moedano. I live on 134 Southeast 12th Street. We are in the process of starting, oh, or building an adult family home there on 12th Street. And I've come, I came to see you guys to see if we would, if you guys would approve our arterial access there for 134 12th Street. So mostly being for safety reasons, safety concerns for the future clients that will live there for bus rides and pickups and drop offs mostly. It will take traffic away from that, that area there on 12th Street. I know 12th Street is one of, maybe the second busiest streets here in College Place, so it'll for sure be something beneficial there. We, we actually bought the property back in 2016, and we've made a lot of renovations to that property in the last couple of years. I don't know if you guys have taken a drive by there, kind of check it out, and then, but yeah, that's basically why I'm here, just advocating for myself and my family to get that approved, so thank you.
Thank you. I would like to remind the council that we will be discussing that request in our action items a little bit later, it's 5:02. Recollect. Okay. Next on the agenda is approving the consent agenda, which includes the council minutes for December 10th, 2019, oh, sorry, today's agenda, and the council minutes. Council minutes for the special meeting that was held on December 23rd, 2019. Approve the council minutes for the workshops of January 7th, 2020. Confirm appointment of the EEDTEC, as well as the financial reports as presented by Mr. Carlton. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor to approve the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried, and the consent agenda is to be adopted. Okay. Next item on the agenda is going to be a presentation from Ms. Ghul regarding the, an update on the library.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here again tonight. Just to give you a quick update on what's been going on with Meadowworth Plaza and the library facility that is there. The space has been painted and carpeted. We've been working with Travis Watt to lower the grid of the ceiling so we can install ceiling panels. Right now, the space is without any ceiling tiles for acoustical reasons, so we need to get that lowered and purchase tiles or egg grade tiles. It's up in the area as to what we're going to get for that. I'm of one opinion and my board is of another. We've had the sprinkler heads lowered so that we can do that work. We will be looking at the HVAC to see if any of the ductwork there needs to be rearranged as well. I don't think that'll be much of an issue. There's not that much ductwork that is in the way of the grid, the way it stands right now, so I don't think it'll be a big problem. We're really pushing for the aluminum egg grade kind of ceiling, like, I suppose somewhat similar to that, just because it's very durable and stains won't show, things like that. There's also, there's also an option of a plastic egg grade tile, but they're prone to breakage, so we're pushing for the aluminum ones. My collection development manager and I have been discussing how we want to lay out the library and how to best utilize the space, and we, did someone have a question? I thought I heard something. No? Okay. We will be getting together this Friday afternoon to go over there and essentially tape out spaces so that we can start looking at how we want to lay things out and which sections of the library need what type of shelving and that type of thing, and furniture. So if you're around late Friday afternoon, stop by. We'd be happy to get some input from you or from anyone else in the community. Right now, we are looking at putting the circulation desk, as you enter the building, just to the right-hand side, just because it's a good space for sightlines, for all of the spaces, and potential spaces within the area there. We may need to do a little bit of electrical work to put phone lines and things in there, but I don't expect that to take a lot of time, and hopefully we can continue on as, as we're planning with things. What I'm looking at is a semi-circular desk that will fit into the corner, so it's more of a, I suppose, like a cone or elliptical kind of thing, and that I think would really maximize our space, as well as be, you know, very aesthetically pleasing for people walking in. Let's see, all of the computer equipment has been ordered, you know, PCs for patron access for staff, the Wi-Fi spots, things like that, routers. We have installed a cabinet for all of that equipment, and the IT department is working on phone lines and things like that, so I think that work should be done fairly, fairly soon, and then we can really get into, you know, finishing up the layout of how we're going to rearrange everything. And let's see, what else? We've been talking furniture. I met with Anita Clark from Bronsmans over in the Tri-Cities last Friday, and she's coming over on Martin Luther King Day next week to look at the space and recommend some fabrics for us and different prints. What I've looked at now is a, I want to say a silicone-based fabric, but it's more of a vinyl, but it's silicone, and it's washable with bleach, so it's, it's very, very user-friendly in terms of being a public space, so I think it'll be a win-win for us if we get furniture like that, and that's my plan. I'm looking at getting some kind of club-style chairs with arms that flip up for tablet use for the adult section and for reading purposes, children's furniture, you know, that's, that's just the start. Uh, let's see, we've ordered a sign with megapixel signs for the front of the building. It'll be about six feet in diameter, so that'll be the big lit sign above the building. And finally, we've ordered baby changing stations for both restrooms, and that's about it. Does anybody have any questions for me? Yes?
Do you have an estimated opening date?
Right now, we're looking at the very latest May 1st. Great. So we need to start ordering collections as soon as we figure out what we need for shelving.
Any other questions or comments?
Anything else?
Well, it sounds like you're making great progress.
We're making progress in spite of what happened at Plaza last month, so.
You're probably very busy and literally probably up to your ankles in water.
A little bit. Not so much now, but last month was a little hairy.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
It does sound like you're making good progress.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks.
Moving on, we have no public hearings today, so let's move on to our action items. Mr. Rosatello is going to discuss the downtown catalyst incentive program.
Thank you. This program was proposed at the last meeting in December and then presented again at the workshop last week. And pretty much with this program, what it would do is it would be competitive in projects that would occur along the College Avenue core and the downtown mixed-use zone from like 13th to top of the hill out to basically oil lock developers could put in for it. It'd be bring down variety of criteria, and then the economic development tourism and events commission, they would essentially grade the applications. And the premise behind this is up to one project, could either have either partial or full building permit fees and so forth waived, and some of the public benefit too would be following the design standards, public art, also public parking, because as you may recall, public parking to really get our downtown district going, that is an issue, but for a city of buildings, that's a lot of money, so this will help foster public-private partnerships. And that, this went through the Economic Development Commission, which has all, a lot of business owners on it. They recommended this, so that's what you see before you today.
Do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Rosatello, please tell me.
So, just to be clear, is this one annually?
This will be an annual, this will be an annual, and then, yeah, based on the success of the City Council, the Economic Development Commission can determine whether in the future we want to fund more than one project. We just really don't know right now. This will be a litmus test.
Fair.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Cleveland?
Just curious about, maybe this is too early, but do we have any provisional preliminary interest in kind of this corridor? Are there people that have talked to you about developing here?
I've had three developers reach out to me already.
That's a good sign.
Anything else?
Quick question.
Mr. Cleveland?
For somebody, what kind of savings would this represent?
I mean, it really.
Is it a $5,000 savings or $50,000?
It, it really could range from five all the way up to 50. It depends on the size of the project, because the building permit fees are sliding scale based on your valuation, so depending on what it is, it can have a wider rate of savings.
So it's extension?
Yeah.
Mr. Cleveland?
I'd like to motion to approve ordinance number 20-001, which adopts Chapter 3.50 of Downtown Catalyst Incentive through the College Place Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All right, do we have any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the motion being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Gordon, who's going to discuss the Southeast 12 arterial access request that we just heard from public comments at the beginning of the meeting.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Lisa, could you pull up exhibit two first, I think? Most of you have already seen this at the workshop, where I'll make this brief. Effectively, we have a applicant who submitted a request, a building permit on April 10th. We advise them that in order to have access off of 12th Street, which is a minor arterial, that he would need to request that from council, which he, they went ahead and submitted an application on May 2nd. The, I'm sorry, on October 31st. The, normally in a situation like this, my inclination would be to recommend against providing that access, just because we'd like to keep those arterials open, and we covered this again at the workshop. But if you look at the exhibit two up here, you'll notice the green line is a minor arterial. This is off a Washtota Functional Classification map. And you can see 12th Street actually serves all the way out into, everybody knows, into all the walls, so it is one of our main corridors. However, in this case, we have an adult family home that's going in there, and in consultation with our fire marshal, they need access, they cannot get access off the backside of the lot. They do have an alley in the back, so normally they would access it through the alley, but because of the condition of the alley, he's not comfortable driving their emergency vehicles up that alley. Instead, they'll use 12th Street. So given that, and the situation, we're recommending that council approve access off 12th Street for that adult family home at 134 Southeast 12th Street. There's a second exhibit here, if you want to show that.
Workhouse isn't working, so I'm using it.
Okay, that's fine.
Exhibit three?
Yes. Exhibit three. And that just shows the red block, shows the concrete access off of 12th Street.
We have, I know we have a little technical difficulties with some of that.
Sorry, Word docs is not engaging today, so I'll pull up the exhibits from the file folder, so they'll be up there, but I can't see whether you have the access on there.
Cheers. Kind of me sometimes. Okay, do we have any questions or comments? No questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve arterial access from 12th Street for 134 Southeast 12th Street due to the need for emergency vehicle access.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing nothing, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. Next on the agenda, Mr. Rosatello is going to discuss the city prosecutor contract agenda.
With the city prosecutor contract, that was presented at the workshop, pretty much a proposal, is from the 1800 a month to 3050 a month, and this has been incorporated into the budget for this year. It's a combination of the increases in the compensation, but then also new programs they have re implemented, which has brought in additional revenue and lowered cost as well. If you look at the little quick comparable cities in the analysis that was done, I presented this at the last workshop, even with the proposed increase, which re-proposed, we're still the lowest compensation on that comparable city scale, so it's something to keep in mind for that, but given where we're at in the level of cases, and then the increase, since we now have additional officers, I feel this is warranted, so.
Do we have any questions or comments at this time?
I thought this was well presented last week and easily justifiable. Question I'd have is, you're still 50% below the typical one out there. I mean, I look at airway heights, I couldn't even find that on the map. Was, was this Ree's number, or is this a negotiated number?
Uh, this was Ree's, this was Ree's number.
Okay, makes that easy.
Yeah, yeah, this was Ree's number, and that's why, that's why I'm saying that I fully back it, because to be perfectly honest, there could have been, there easily could have been an argument for additional compensation above that, based on what I found, so.
That was the point of course, Mike.
Yeah.
And she had this information too when she was.
Yeah. But she also knows the fiscal reality.
She's also looking at the cost as far as this, I read that.
Yeah.
Document that we had for last week, and I think this is more than reasonable.
Yep.
Sincerely appreciate her being more than reasonable with us.
Yeah, here, here.
All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the increase for city prosecutor services to 3,050 a month, beginning with January 1, 2020.
Second.
All right, you have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing nothing, let's vote. All in favor of the recommended action, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Thank you, Mr. Rosatello. All right, Ms. Derry is going to discuss the 2020 salary ordinance.
All right, so here to talk about the salary ordinance for 2020, we, every year, the first meeting, first council meeting of the year, after the budget's been approved, we go ahead and approve the ordinance, the salary ordinance. So I can go over the information. It's fairly standard to what it usually is. Police chief and city administrator increases at 4.5%, all other non-union exempt employees 2%. A couple of positions were removed from the salary ordinance, just because we don't have those positions anymore, so we don't need them anymore, so that's the planning director and the HR specialist. We changed Deputy Clerk Finance HR title to Deputy Finance Director HR Assistant, because we added Carolyn's position, and she'll be, so those duties we've passed on to her. And in Section 3, we have the increase for the police sergeants that was in their contract, 7%. We added the operations manager, which was part of our succession planning for the future, and we bargained with the union to have that position remove, or his current position removed from the union, him removed from the union, and then into that position. Um, let's see, Public Works employees, their increase was already bargained a couple of years ago, so that's included. There's, we talked about the deputy clerk, events coordinator was added, police officers or police union, a 7% increase, bargained this year, and then the firefighters increase at 3%, which was bargained a couple of years ago in their contract. In Section 7, we removed a couple of positions that we haven't had forever, a reserve dispatcher, animal control officer, and then also added the part-time records clerk for the police department, which was budgeted for. And then Sections 10, 11, and 12, just added some language in there to cover some benefits that haven't changed, they just weren't reflected anywhere, so I thought that they should be somewhere. 10 and 11 are about the benefits for unrepresented employees, and then 12 is about the fire chief's pay when he is on a fire in the summer that is reimbursed by another agency. And then 13 is about the split for paid family medical leave, how that will be paid, those fees. And then last is just the updated language that we add to the end of the ordinances now. Do anybody have any questions?
Any questions or comments regarding the salary ordinance? Ms. Myhena?
Since removal of the animal control officer, what's going to happen with?
Um, we have a special enforcement officer, that's part of his duties now, so.
Another officer is going to.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Ms. Selby?
I would make a motion to approve the proposed 2020 salary ordinance number 20-002 and contract amendments as presented.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any other discussions or questions? Mr. Peterson?
The order of this, maybe I've missed something here. The budget's been approved, and I understand this is language correction.
Yeah, this is just language implementation on the budget, but it's all budget, so.
Right.
We just do it the first meeting of the month, because I don't actually do the payroll cycle for January until February 3rd or 4th-ish, so instead trying to fit it into the last part of 2000, or the previous year, 2019, we do it in the first meeting.
To save the August, the budget has to be approved before.
Right.
However, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking about that too.
Yeah, no, it's.
I had ideas that I could.
Okay, thank you. There's no way around it, I just, it's interesting.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all in motion, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rosatello is going to discuss the fish barrier removal.
Okay, this is a resolution of support for a grant opportunity from Recreation Conservation Office and State Department Fish and Wildlife as part of our stormwater capital improvement plan. One of the issues is essentially fixing some of our culverts and outfalls along Garrison Creek, and should we get this grant opportunity, this would do final engineering on roughly about five culvert areas along Garrison Creek at the crossings with Owens Road out at the wastewater treatment plant, Baye Avenue at 10th Street, Puff Lane at 10th Street, Birch Avenue near 10th Street, and then Date at 10th Street. So that is what this grant opportunity would entail. This is just resolution of support, there are no commitments right now, there'll be a grant application, grant contract should we be awarded funds.
Do we have any questions or comments, Mr. Rosatello?
Yeah, I have one. So this is about improving those areas that would not, upgrading, I'll say that runoff or whatever in the river to support fish from, or the removal of the fish barrier, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, this is basically helping.
Upgrading the river.
Yeah, this is helping with our stormwater issue, but then at the same time, it's helping with the fish passage, because Garrison Creek is actually listed as such on their website as a priority watershed, believe it or not, so.
But you, I mean, there's a lot more work than these five.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
This is years away from getting fish removal, the barriers removed, right?
Yeah, yeah. If you look basically the way the grant application is, I'm trying to work basically from downstream to upstream, so Owens Road and then Bay going all the way into Date, so.
Gotcha.
And there's other ones down the road that we don't really control, they'll need to occur at a later juncture.
We would have to do all these, we'd have to do all these all the way to Meyer at some point.
At some point, that is in the stormwater master plan, that, and then, and then there's other like private issues left to deal with at some juncture, like near Large Street, there's a water wheel in Garrison Creek, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, which is, which is why for now, that's why I ended the grant application at Date, so while we deal with that.
Ms. Myhena?
It says it will only occur if we get the state grant. What's our hope of getting the state grant?
Uh, I, I think we have a significant likelihood of getting the state grant, because this is a priority watershed in their plan, so.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Work all over the state, too, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 20-001, which supports grant application for $200,000 for five culverts conveying Garrison Creek.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Ms. Selby?
I would just like to comment that I'm, once again, so impressed about the way that you managed to find all of these grants that we need to do, so.
I love free money.
And I don't know if you noticed, but he was. And I don't know if you noticed, but he was doing this all on the top of his head. I'm trying to keep track of where everything was at and he's just naming it off the top of his head.
I told you we had a good staff.
He did just give it to her.
He knows the things are needed. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion is carried and adopted. Thank you, Ms. Zatelllo. Okay, next on the agenda is US 12 Phase 7 Resolution of Support.
Okay, this is a lobbying issue. So the backstory behind this is this was funded as part of the connecting Washington transportation package. However, the passage of that initiative 976 is just throwing everything into disarray as far as projects. And the order from the executive director of the State Department of Transportation was any project where there has not been executed a contract on it, just hold it. And alarming thing at the last meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Organization is that the representative from Department of Transportation basically said that due to the high dollar value of the project and people serving in, the fact that with the little bit of money left, they're trying to dedicate it to more urban areas, that there was a significant threat for completely mothballing US 12 Phase 7, which as you may recall is basically continuing the divided highway from like the Frenchtown area over a nine-mile hill. So originally construction on this was going to start ballpark this year, but at the MPO meeting, there definitely was comments made where I would say this is definitely on thin ice at the moment and they're looking to do fund sweeps wherever they can and try to keep what they can in that transportation budget. So if we're for real about keeping Phase 7 going and eventually getting Phase A and having the four-lane highway basically always Seattle, we need to convey this immediately so we don't lose this.
But any questions or comments, Mr. Zatelllo? Ms. Selby?
There, will we lose federal money if we don't do this project? Because I think, wasn't there federal money in it?
Yeah, there is federal money in it and that would be lost too. And typically, once you turn back money in for a federal project, that's going to be a major mark on Department of Transportation. Frankly, this region at that point, it's very hard to recover from that point where the one does that.
I would, I would like to comment that I think there's multiple reasons. The economic development is very strong. It's also a safety issue, a big safety issue. And I don't have accident statistics at the top of my head, but it is. And then there's the loss of the federal money.
Yeah.
So I think we have a really strong, strong arguments in the federal.
Yeah.
Do we know what the surrounding, the other cities or the, I'm sorry, the county, what are they thinking about this? Do we have maybe a...
Well, this came up at the MPO meeting last week and the State Department of Transportation representatives can't really say one way or another because he's a state official, so can't really convey what to do. But pretty much the agreement around the table from everyone else was that this needed to pass in some form and we just happened to be the first ones having a meeting after the MPO meeting to pass it. But I would suspect you will see resolutions in similar forms be passed by the surrounding agencies because I mean, this is the top legislative agenda for the unify the local government consortium, which is the county, the port, and then us, so.
So hopefully there'll be some strength in numbers.
We hope.
It seems to me 976 is getting a lot of pushback across the state. So is it more likely that someone's going to be dealt with on that resolution? In time to save this project? Is that anything likely?
I think projects and connecting Washington, if there's a lot of support behind them, I think they'll figure out a way to where sweep money and from what to try to keep them going. The one bad, the one bad side for us, I would say, is the one bad thing is that may put us in jeopardy with the appropriation we were making, trying to make for Cedar and Damson. Because even though we've sold that to them, that still isn't defined funding really. So that's port barrel funding. So in that case, I could see where as far as a regional project, that could prioritize. But I do think it'll help, the resolution will help save it. As far as the really bigger wider sweeping things to save the effects of 976, I don't really think you're going to see that this legislative session just because this is the short session. So they try to be out of there in 60 days to then go campaign for the next election. So I wouldn't really expect to see something wide sweeping to change the course.
That's disappointing.
Yeah.
All right, any others? Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution of support for US Highway 12 Phase 7 project.
You have a first and a second. Any other discussions or questions either? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is carried and adopted. Thank you, Mr. Zatelllo. Next up, Mr. Carlton will be discussing the investment rollout and low pay down.
Evening, counsel. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation today, so. But before you, I'm asking for your support on some of our investments rolling out. Little bit of background. As you are aware, we have a significant amount of our capital invested in some investments accounts. Those are spread out over certain periods of time ranging from six months to five years. On December 26th, one of those investments for just over half a million dollars matured. We had to make a decision on what to do with that investment. And as you are currently aware, interest rates have crept up a little bit in the last three to six months, therefore the, the interest rates on bonds has gone down. That investment that matured was at 2.15% interest per year. The current rate we were going to get on reinvesting that funds was 1.55%. In discussion with Mike and else, we would like to recommend using part of those proceeds to pay down a loan we have on the fire engine loan that was taken out in 2016. It is currently at 1.99%. The net effect of this decision would be saving the city 0.44% interest and also reducing our debt. The balance of that fund was reinvested on the 26th of December, the $230,000. So we're asking approval by the council to use those remaining funds to pay off the loan. Also, based on our investment counselors, TBI, their historical percentage of cash versus investments is trends towards a 50-50 split. And currently, we are at 49% cash, 51% investments. So this not only pays down our debt, but also brings back our investment cash position to closer to a 50-50 split.
I guess I've got some heartburn with this one. You're going to say half, less than half a percent is about $1,000. And we're basically tie up a quarter million dollars of capital to do that, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about?
No, we're paying down capital. We're paying off the loan.
No, but we're paying off a loan. We're taking investment cash.
Cash.
And you're putting out $270,000 and you're saving over time $1,000, it sounds like, or $10,000.
Half a percent on the rate.
Which is...
But we reinvest that at 1.55%, but we're paying 2% on the loan.
And how much are we paying down of the loan?
200, approximately $270,000.
See, we needed a PowerPoint, Brian.
Yeah.
Mr. Bobbitt?
What year did you say that fire engine was purchased?
2016.
And our document here says 2013, is that what it says?
2013 or...
Oh, sorry. 2013.
So, okay, I, what are the, do we currently pay monthly on that loan?
It's a yearly payment.
And how much per year, approximately?
I don't have that in front of me.
So regardless, we save that basically. We're not going to lose those payments anymore.
$1,000.
It's not $1,000, it's more than $1,000.
I mean, it's all the same cash. I mean, you're taking $270,000 now to save a half a percent. I mean, if the rest of you could like that, I don't think that's a good investment.
The thing would be, is what is the other option to invest it at a lower interest rate?
Right.
Use it for something you have high value. Get some leverage out of it. If there isn't anything on the dock to do it, I understand, I'd do...
But we don't want to have that.
Or restricted in the usage of it. It could now go to general fund. Yes, well, I believe that would go into the general fund.
To pay off?
So if we opted not to pay down the debt and do something else with that, of that loan money, instead of paying down the loan, instead wanted to use that money for something else, what would we be allowed to use that money on? You know?
I would take that deal. Personally, I would take that deal.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it would be general fund, so I mean, you could do other projects with the... The entire thing is that with the money we keep in investments, that was maturing and then looking at the rates of interest, it was just that in essence, based off of what the investments that were available, this was the, this was the better choice when weighing the two. Because I mean, regardless, at the end of the day, you still have the debt. And cities and localities typically do put the money, so it works for you, into set investments. But in this juncture in time though, it's just that the investments are not essentially above what the rate is of what we were paying on the debt, so.
Yeah, and we'll have a similar issue coming up in June where we have close to $1 million maturing.
Ms. Selby?
Well, this makes, I think this makes a good use of those funds. How many more years do we have to pay on the loan?
I think it, I believe, it matures in 2025.
Okay, so we have a number of years that we would be saving.
Yeah, and the payment is approximately $50,000 a year.
Ms. Sherman, would you...
Yeah, I have a question. Now Karen.
So right now, when you said we were at 50, 50, I mean, a 49, 51 split, which way were we heavy? Where it's debt?
We're heavy, no, that's between investments and cash.
And oh, investments and cash, okay.
And right now, we're heavy on investments.
We're heavy on...
And this would balance that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just...
It still reduces the city's debt. Okay, Ms. Sherman?
Yeah, so the, does this $270,000 loan, that factors into our debt ratio, right?
Yes, it reduces the total, reduces the total debt.
Yeah, I like the idea of getting more of that. I mean, because, I mean, compared to the 6.6 million cash, 270 is pretty small, so if we can... I like it.
Yeah, and we'll have a similar issue coming up in, I didn't provide this, but we have, it's about just over $1 million maturing in June. And we're trying to spread out our investments. So we're hitting terms, six months, a year, a year and a half, two years, up to five years. And we'll have to make some further decisions in six months on what to do with the $1 million.
And I would just also add sometimes too, the idea behind this as well is that when the next year or two, we do have like another, like fire engine coming due to keep our fire graven, and that was in the approved equipment replacement plan that you all approved, so given where, where the market is now with the loan interest and knowing that we have that engine nearing on the horizon, that was the thought process behind the...
Mr. Cleveland?
I just like the idea of paying down our debt obligation. And it seems the math works out that it's, does save us some money to pay it off now as opposed to investing in. So I'd like to motion to authorize the finance director to use a portion of the proceeds from a maturing investment to pay off LTGO fire engine bond with community bank approximately $270,000.
Second. You have a first and a second. Any other questions or discussion either? Let's vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you.
Hey, unfortunately I lost my board docs, so.
Oh, okay, I didn't take a peek at yours.
Okay, so...
That's the last one.
I'm getting this mic, so you have to administer the report for us. Thank you.
Yeah, let me see if I can pull things from... Board docs is not going to help us.
Yeah, it went blank on me. So the discussion either regarding council rules comprehensive document, which is what's been working on for us.
So it's... I have all my notes in the agenda bill on the workshop. Do you want to use mine? So basically, we discussed it at the workshop and what we'd like to do is this is not changing anything except for the conflicts with the ordinance issues with the time and date, leaving that being set by ordinance rather than by resolution. Other than that, all it is, is compiling all the existing rules into one document so that then we can move forward with knowing what those rules were, practicing that and seeing how it goes, and then finding, determining whether or not we wanted to tweak that in the future. And then in the future, when we tweak it, we will do a complete repeal of the one document and establish new ones so that we're always working from one single rules document.
Certainly makes it more manageable. Mr. Bubbit?
Yeah, I think there are some issues that came up with the Senate committee of things that were not covered such as electronic participation in meetings and some of the newer technology that is uncovered, and I think we need to deal with that at point number one. And number two, we need to re-read the rules document that gets re-taped through updated with time. So it is, like you said, a single document, a spreadsheet.
Right. And the, the current parliamentary procedure book that we use does have rules for all of those things in it. So basically, anything not covered through this document would be covered with those rules.
I think right now the procedures aren't using that, but I think that's already in our appointments to use the procedures book, but I don't think there's anything that specifies that we're all using the latest version. I think it has a specific version.
No, it does not.
Okay.
We corrected that already in one of our previous changes.
And basically, what we want in the rules are the exceptions to parliamentary procedures. Am I correct in your understanding?
I'm not quite catching what you're saying.
Basically, the number one rule is we follow that parliamentary procedures book... Basically, the number one rule is we follow that parliamentary procedures book, and the only thing we really want to specify, I think Larry Dickerson talked a lot about this, maybe we should back off, we kind of backed off to observe because we've had, what, two changes in leadership and the actual procedures that we're following have actually changed slightly, kind of reflecting the leadership, no, it's been two changes. And so we were sitting back and observing and everything's flowing so well, why rock the boat at this point? But to start observing what are we actually doing and then maybe get that down in the line.
These rules...
Because the existing, I mean, it's like all these different documents.
Right, but that's why I compiled this document here, and these rules actually are what we are following. The actions that we're taking and the rules that we're currently using are these.
Yeah, for the most part. I'm not sure if the electronic...
Yeah, that was a...
...participation is really clearly identified.
It is in the parliamentary procedure book and we are using that, those procedures.
Because it wasn't in the one we were working on at the time. So the parliamentary procedure book has gone to a new edition.
I believe I made you all a new book not very long ago, and that one does have it in it. It is the most current version and it does have all of the electronic stuff.
Mr. Dickerson?
You know, I think the discussion in the workshop was, I'm not sure who brought, I don't remember who exactly brought it up, but it was a case of, we're basically trying to bring this information in from five, six, seven different spots into a central location.
Right.
And we realized that it is anything but...
Oh, no, it's not perfect by any...
And so I think one of the considerations were that we've got it all in one corral here and we realize there's still a lot of heavy lifting ahead and that we'll have to address the problems and the issues as we see one forward, yeah.
Right.
But that's a different document.
Right, this is not an end, this is more or less resources in one area.
It's more like the beginning, actually.
And then we, yeah, we realized there are a lot of cleanup work to do, and I think that's part of the heavy lifting in the future is to get the, how we want to address the cleanup of some of those issues, you know, now that we have it all cornered in one end of the room, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the desire was to create one single document, and the other desire was to maybe remove some of those requirements if it is already covered in the standard parliamentary procedures book. And if the verbiage has changed, always be using the latest edition, that might resolve a lot of issues. In other words, it's like there are so many little nitty-gritty things, we compile them all together, and then with all these changes that have been happening with the council, it's like, you know, especially being newer than, right, Michael? Now we're getting a little more experience. It's like, what's it supposed to look like? We didn't know.
So have you read the compilation?
And what is happening right now is working very well.
No.
And I don't have a problem really with just trying to say, okay, we're pretty much following the parliamentary procedures. There might be some unique things to this group and then we want to make sure that we are there on the electronic participation.
So have you read the compilation document that I created?
I don't think I've seen it.
It's been provided in the last two packets. It's in this one and it was in the workshop packet.
Yeah, I haven't thought of mine.
So it's available on Word docs.
Opening stuff up right now.
Right, right now, but it's, I mean, it's been out there available for a couple of weeks.
What I appreciate about this is that it puts it all in one place and then from there it allows us then to work through it, correct any things that are no longer relevant, move any redundancies, or add what we, what may be missing that we discover once we go through that compiled document.
And if I might add, it's only about compilation, nothing has changed, right?
Correct.
Right.
So the idea was throw it all into one bucket and if somebody got really interested in reviewing those, they'd be in one bucket, you wouldn't have to go delve through all this stuff.
Mr. Cleveland?
Just one comment from reading through these so far. I really appreciate the organization, the updates, and I appreciate the effort gone into it. If there are any specific requests or changes that any of us on the council have, certainly, you know, discuss them with Lisa or Mike or the mayor, and that way we can provide feedback on maybe future changes. For now, I just really appreciate the work that's been going into it to make everything organized and clear and not in 40 different documents. And again, also appreciate the work that it took to like, all right, where is all this stuff? So, thank you.
I also think it's going to make it much easier that when we do change something, we don't have to look for this, change it in this document and then maybe this document and then maybe this document, we'll know where exactly, we don't miss that danger.
There were two changes made, very minor changes. So in the proposed resolution, we took out any reference to the date and time of the meetings because that is set by ordinance, and so there's no reason, if it's changed by ordinance, then you would have to go in and change a resolution, which we haven't done in the past, so they were conflicting actually. So it removes that so that the ordinance is the law and an ordinance supersedes a resolution anyway. And then we did add the recommendation from the city attorney that a person cannot transfer their allotted speaking time to another person. Those are the only two things that are changes. Everything else is...
Mr. Dickerson?
At the workshop, I think I was a little unclear, is there a need for a subcommittee to still look at this? If there were council members that were so inclined, that wanted to work through it to make, to address any issues of alignment of source documents, or is that, where were we at on that, or is that not needed? And I think we were looking for volunteers, if I remember, not consign?
Yeah, my understanding at the workshop was that we were going to use this and see how things went and then determine after three or six months whether or not we needed to then have that committee looking at things.
Mr. Bobbitt?
I understand the subcommittee was appointed in what year was that?
2016, shortly after I started.
And I think Larry Dickerson, Michael myself, we got subcommittee, now we've lost Larry, you know, valuable work, and he was kind of the one we were looking to, the one with the experience. Since we lost him, we kind of lost that part of the idea, was that we would come back with a recommendation to the council. But it sounds like this compilation pretty much accomplished what the subcommittee wanted to do and that we got some of the things we found that were kind of missing and not clear in the existing things. And with all of that's covered, and I know what we're doing now works very well, and we have to know with the document, I think, that pretty much runs that out, I think that would be something that definitely need forward.
Agreed. So I will plan on bringing it for action at the next meeting?
Yes, please.
And then we can work with it and see how it goes from there. Thank you.
Thank you. The package includes some budget and some development flyers. Thank you very much, those were very nice, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you both very much. Mr. Carlton, Mark Tomlin as well, so thank you, we'll all leave now very nice. Okay, do we have any other business for discussion?
How much time on, just a second, we still need another person on the panel before Ms. Lee's call.
I was going to take that role.
No, we have, we were, if we'd known that normal was going to be here, then we would have had it on this agenda, but it'll be on next, next meeting's agenda.
Thanks for reminding me, Madam Ford.
Next regular meeting, yes. Oh, yes, and a reminder that next Tuesday at 5:30, we have a special meeting because we will have bid opening Friday, so that packet may be arriving fairly late, yes.
Isn't it possible to start like at 6:30? I have a conflict at 5:30, that's why I can't really make the workshops, you know, I'm scheduled for council at 7, you know, and the 5:30 meetings has been very hard for me, but...
There's only one item on this.
There's only one item, that's the day of planning commission, but I think there's not a planning commission meeting?
This month, there is no planning commission.
There's no planning commission meeting?
So we'll start next month, so this month, that won't work, but starting the end of the...
Right.
So we have a request to push next week's special meeting to 6:30 and from 5:30 to 6:30 for just this time, do we have any, Mr. Cleveland?
I'd prefer to keep it at 5:30. Personally, that works best for my schedule. Understandably, it doesn't work very good for yours, but again, only one item. Then you, well, I guess you're busy, you can't throw in, but...
This is straight for item two.
Yes.
I hear what you're saying here. I think in this case, we're giving the bids so that you guys can take action on the order that we gave. I don't know that, I mean, the action in this case...
I'll send out the packet and if you have concerns, you can contact Mr. Gordon. Would that work?
Any other business for discussion? All right, if you have a motion for discussion in our meeting.
I would just like to introduce Carolyn to everybody. This is Carolyn Holm, new deputy city clerk, events coordinator.
All right, we have a motion, do you hear?
Second.
We have a person, a second, any other items?
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is adjourned.